All right, it's six thirty. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Burnham for access.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mrs. Carol Ashambo will not be present this evening. Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Secretary, Ms. Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Schoolenbrini also will not be present this evening, and Mr. Peter Beardmore.
I'm here.
Um, don't think I see a student representative with us this evening. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Lunenburg Middle High School Principal, Mr. Tim Santry.
Yes.
And this evening, I would like to introduce our new Recording Secretary, Ms. Courtney Fuller. Hi, Courtney. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it back to you now, Mr. Leighton.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website, on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remote so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, Facebook Live, etc., as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules, we are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Brian Leighton, and the Vice Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Vice Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each member by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Vice Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. Once the Chair has a list of all public commenters, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for each comment. Finally, each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So first item on the agenda, or second item on the agenda now is public comment. So I'll open it up to public comment from the public. Kind of just raise your hands. We have Caesar NuZolo.
Hi, everyone. My name's Caesar NuZolo. I live at 145 Woodland Drive. I just wanted to introduce myself real quickly. So I just moved to Lunenburg in October. I looked for a way to get involved in the community and that brought me to the Finance Committee. So I had my first meeting with them last week, and I'm going to be taking over from Evan as the liaison from the Finance Committee. So I'm going to be tuning into your meetings. I'm here as a resource in whatever way I can help out, and I look forward to working with you all.
Welcome, Caesar. Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Not seeing any. Any public comment from the members? Oh, sorry, we have one public comment on the phone, nine seven eight four zero zero one one two eight, if you want to unmute yourself. Should be unmuted now.
Hi, this is Rhonda Licio, 181 Reservoir Road. I just have a comment and a couple of questions. At a meeting in November, a parent made a public comment expressing his family's desire to opt out of the district's social emotional learning program. This parent and spouse had public commented many at many meetings on this topic over the course of several months. The family was being denied the choice to opt out. I made a public comment at a December meeting in which I expressed my disagreement with the district's position. But found out later in the meeting, the district was finally allowing families the choice to opt out of SEL. My question is, what happened between November and December to cause this shift in the district's position? And also, while listening to the SEL presentation at the December meeting, I learned that in addition to the SEL special, SEL is woven into the classroom curriculum. So I'm looking for clarification. It appears parents are allowed to opt out of the SEL special. Are they also allowed to opt out of the SEL woven into the regular classroom curriculum? Thank you.
Dr. Burnham, did you want to address that?
I think there might be some confusion. There's no opt-out option. I think perhaps what might have been heard during the presentation is when the guidance counselors are facilitating the lessons, students can opt out from sharing during a particular lesson. No one is required or mandated to participate during the lessons. I think perhaps that's where the confusion may lie.
Okay, so I misunderstood that parents are able to opt out of the SEL special to remove their parents from that special, their children from that special?
That's correct. There's no opt-out of the course.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Is there any other public comment from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll open up to public comment from the committee. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the Chair's report. I just had a couple of things. I found out today that we have a new state rep. Margaret Scarsdale was sworn in today by Governor Maury Healy. I reached out to Carol Arshambo too, so that we can reach out to her and try to get her to State Representative Margaret Scarsdale to come to a meeting, so we can talk with her and meet her. Also, the Select Board met last night at our own middle high school in the auditorium. It was packed. I saw Peter there too. I would definitely recommend watching the YouTube when you see it published on the access. But basically, the lakefront properties were assessed very high tax increases, and the Select Board supported those citizens' concerns. They also recommended those citizens file abatements in a timely manner by the deadline. Select Board Member Jeffrey stated that there was about just over $100,000 in the budget set aside for abatements. But they could add more funding to that abatement, which again would affect our budget as well. So there's definitely some concerns there which could connect back to the schools. And I would definitely want to make sure we keep in touch with the town manager on that to make sure we know what's going on with the budget. That was all I had.
Hey, Brian, can I just make one quick clarification on this?
Yes.
So with respect to the overlay accounts, I actually learned something new about that last night. When you think you know everything about the budget, somebody teaches you something new. So last year, there was actually a change made to the number that we have typically done over the last few years on the overlay number, and we put $116,000 into that overlay account. What I didn't know until last night is that that is an accumulating account. And it currently sits at a little over $280,000, which is actually, in this circumstance, good news. I think that 280-something thousand dollars, given what we heard last night, is probably a drop in the bucket of what's needed. But it is a little bit more than some of us had been discussing over the course of the last couple of weeks.
Thank you. That is good news. All right, next item on the agenda is review and approve minutes from November 2nd and November 16. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
Well, I did have one concern. I think Laura was not at, I'm trying to find it here, was not at.
I'm also trying to find out which date it was.
Which one it was, yeah. So we're gonna have to do them separately because we don't have a forum for one of them.
The, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can't approve November 16.
Okay.
But if you want to make a motion for
November 2nd.
November 2nd, if you do that.
I move to approve minutes for November 2nd as presented.
I will second that.
All right, we're gonna do, any discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call vote.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you. So if we could just get those minutes to the 11:16 minutes for the next meeting, that would be great. Keep that on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is review and approve line item transfers. I'll turn that over to Mr. Cassidy.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. Tonight, I am presenting some line item transfers in the local budget. I'll share it on the screen. I did attempt to break up the the transfers as far as where it's going and where the money is coming from. So I did the best job I could. Sometimes it just kind of falls outside of the the association, but in there are on three separate sheets. There are on an A, B, and C sheet just to try to be transparent on some of these transfers. So the A sheet is addressing some of the reconciling some of the sub-accounts at the high school sped. Elementary regular substitutes in our middle school regular substitutes, and we're drawing from other substitutes accounts. We are shifting some of our money from elementary paraprofessionals to the primary school, middle school, and high school. And this is where the FTS landed as the students moved at the beginning of the year. And most, we do still have a few open positions. Pairs seem to be coming and going. So it's time to make this adjustment to balance those line items. And then finally, I'm shifting some money, as promised, into school stipends for the chemical hygiene officer. And that's coming from the middle school nurse, which there was a surplus in there due to a lower hired employee, new employee. Sheet two is sheet B. So we are shifting some high school guidance software funds to middle school contracted services, which is basically funds to support the I-ready at the middle school. Our athletic insurance went up $890, and we're shifting funding there. We've had an extraordinary amount of unemployment claims this year, so we're looking for an increase into that account. And then finally dues in meetings. There was a last-minute dues that the district joined, or a group that the district joined. So we're reconciling that with just some salary and wages in classified ads. And then finally, we're monitoring our natural gas usage, and we're projecting a slight increase from last year. And our computer-related services, it's additional contract that we took on this year. And we're just shifting some of the money from some other facility and grounds account to the natural gas account and a computer account. We're shifting money to another computer account. So we're trying to align some of that funding when we can within the area that was originally funded. I'll turn it over to the Chair for any questions from the committee or public.
Does any of the members of the committee have any questions, comments?
I had a good conversation with Mr. Cassidy this morning and had a number of questions just in terms of the the overall methodology here and some specific questions around how we're budgeting particularly for paraprofessionals. And what I learned is part of the art form here is that it's very difficult to predict exactly how much money we're going to spend in a given building in a given year on paraprofessionals because it relates to IEPs. Sometimes for students who are being promoted into a new building and lack of clarity in terms of whether there'll be a need for pairs the following year. So it was a good education and good first-year learning for me in terms of how these adjustments work and the timeline on them. So I have no questions.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly? Thanks. The only question I had, which I kept thinking to ask, but the energy costs, I'm not surprised with the gas. But electricity, any concerns on electricity with there? I know the town had huge rate increases. Is this not an issue? Is it the solar panels covering us more?
We've been able to, we've, it was properly budgeted. We're not anticipating an overage, and we're pretty much on target based upon our invoices and usage. Obviously, we're watching all of our utility expenses very closely. So, you know, I met with the Facility Director. We're not alarmed with our mid-year budgeting for our expenses, so I think we're on target.
Great, thank you. If there's no other questions, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the light item transfers as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Burnham.
Good evening again, everyone. I wanted to just provide some additional information relative to our new Recording Secretary. We recently had posted for an additional Recording Secretary to assist with getting our meeting minutes current. As you know, we are backlogged a little bit. And I'm happy that Ms. Fuller applied and has joined our team. She will not only be assisting with the backlog of our minutes, but will be job-sharing with Susan Summers. So we have a schedule set, and they each will be covering one meeting a month. So once again, I just want to welcome Courtney. Thanks. Thanks for joining us. Much appreciated. We hope to have those minutes caught up in the near term. An update on the hybrid school committee meetings. We have received a new microphone setup and tested those microphones, and I'm very happy to report that finally, we have microphones that will provide clear audio. We also have a camera that will allow us to conduct those hybrid Zoom meetings from the middle high school. We do not yet have the capability of broadcasting these meetings live. PAC is going to have to further investigate how to set that component up. So we will continue to look at this and hope to be able to add live broadcasting from the middle high school at a later time. The equity audit, I had a chance to speak with the consultants. They've worked up a draft. They are giving us an opportunity to review and provide any additional information that might require some correction or editing to the final report. And I hope to have that final report in time for our February 1st meeting. But I can't guarantee it at this time, but I'm hopeful that we will be able to provide you something at that meeting. An update relative to our family-school partnership initiative program. We had a facilitated team meeting on January 11th, and we have an independent team meeting without the facilitators scheduled for Monday, the 23rd. Our work is ongoing in terms of the self-assessment. And the facilitators were able to give us some highlights on information that they gathered from the different focus groups. And we will use that information as we continue our self-assessment. I wanted to follow up on lunches on early release days. We spoke about that at the last meeting. I reached out to Bright-Eyed, the nonprofit group that is providing meal and hygiene care packages to students in need. They have been doing so all year. Actually, they began late last year. They were able to add an extra meal to the care packages that were going out on Friday. As you know, Friday was an early release day, so they added the added meal into the packages that were going home anyway. We will continue to collaborate with this particular organization to meet the needs of our students next year on early release days as well. When the calendar comes forward for next year, I anticipate at the next meeting, you'll see that we have continued to schedule the early release professional development days on Fridays, which should facilitate the ease of adding some additional food into the care packages for those kiddos that are in need. I have an update on the snack shack. We were approached by Mr. and Mrs. Lawrence. They're seeking to make a donation to the school department to support upgrades that are being made to the snack shack. We're working on an itemized list of recent and planned upgrades, which we will share with the Lawrence. And we will be bringing forward their donation once these details have been outlined. I would like to publicly thank the Lawrence for reaching out and for their generous offer of support. Additionally, the Policy Subcommittee will be discussing a concession stand policy, which has been drafted by our Food Service Director, Nadine Lorenzen, at the meeting that we have scheduled for this Friday. And I would also like to publicly thank Nadine, as well as Michael Cassidy and our maintenance team for all their efforts and collaboration with the boosters to work on these upgrades of that facility. I also wanted to provide you an update that my office did reach out to the offices of Senator Cronin and Representative Kuschmerich to see if they might be able to attend an upcoming meeting, taking a look at the scheduled items for upcoming meetings. We thought that February 15th might be a good meeting. We haven't heard back yet, but I'll keep you updated as to their availability to join us for a meeting. Few updates. As a reminder for families, second quarter ends this Friday. And forums for the staff on the FY24 budget have been scheduled for this Friday morning before school begins, as well as Monday afternoon, two sessions have been scheduled. These are optional. Staff are not required to attend, and they can select from these three opportunities which one works best for their schedule. Additionally, they've been advised that the slides are posted and available. They can review those slides and email me any questions they may have as well. And lastly, our next school committee meeting will be February 1st at 6:30 PM. This will be a hybrid meeting from Town Hall. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. Does any committee member have any questions or comments for the Superintendent?
I do. I actually just have a couple of comments, no questions. I reached out. So first of all, I think it's awesome. We have a plan for audio for hybrid meetings. I've been in touch with the Superintendent over the last couple of weeks, expressing a certain degree of urgency around this because the governor's order for hybrid, for remote meetings expires at the end of March, I believe. And I know that the legislature is looking at options, but it's completely unclear what's next, and the ability to do hybrid meetings, I think, is something that we outlined as part of our plans during the summer. And I'd prefer to be hybrid together than completely remote, and I think most of the school committee members share in that opinion. So the sooner we can get there, the better. I've gotten dribs and drabs of information from tuning in to PAC meetings around encoders that didn't work as anticipated and network equipment that may need to be upgraded, or I'm not exactly sure. So, you know, at some point, if we can get some clarity on exactly what the technical situation is there, but I actually did have a question, which is we could still go with Zoom, just not broadcast more or less with the equipment that we have now. Is that, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. We would just record the meeting like we're recording the meeting this evening.
And people can obviously join in on Zoom if they choose to, like they would on Facebook or something like that. Just requires an internet connection and a Zoom app. So, and then I just wanted to offer a shout out to the Bright-Eyed Organization. The Superintendent, you know, kind of on the fly, thought of this during our last meeting at Town Hall as we were talking about this dilemma. And she reached out to them the next day, and they immediately stepped up. And to be really honest, as a new member, I had missed the presentation that they gave last spring and was relatively unaware of them and the services they provide until the Superintendent pointed me to that information. And what an impressive group of fellow neighbors we have here in Lunenburg who have stepped up to provide this extraordinary and generous service. It's really a credit to our town and the individuals involved. Those are my comments.
Any other comments or questions for the Superintendent? Thank you. All right, moving on, the next item on the agenda is the Student Representatives Report.
And again, I don't believe that we have a student rep with us this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is New Business Action Item, LHS Program of Studies.
Mr. Santry is here with us this evening to review changes that have been made to the high school program of study. So turn it over to Mr. Santry.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. Good evening, everyone. Tim Santry, Principal, Lunenburg Middle High School. Once again, thank you for having me here tonight to discuss our program of studies, some minor changes that we're proposing, and actually some new courses that we hope to offer for the And actually some new courses that we hope to offer for the 2324 school year. Before I begin, I would just like to thank my department heads who have done. Really the yeoman's work and gathering and making these essential recommendations. To the coursework that's both rigorous and accessible to all of our students at Lunenburg High School. So thank you, my department heads. I'd also like to thank my assistant principals who played a large role in helping me format and organize and. Making sure all of our I's were dotted and our T's were crossed. It's always nice having that support system. At the high school and also like to thank them. With the chair's permission, I'd just like to review the changes and additions, then I can field any questions that you may have.
That would be great. Thank you.
Great. So. Just start off with. Some of the perennial updates that we make to our MCAS requirements. Those will be put in there. Those have been changing now that in 2021, MCAS was canceled, it's set into play. A whole different. Set of regulations that would allow. For that requirement for the MCAS for 10th grade students to graduate. Also, we're transitioning from the legacy test to the online test, which are two different whole systems of scoring. So the. Desi puts out. Different requirements for different graduation years. So we make sure that those are in our programs to study. Also clarifying our virtual high school classes. This wasn't clarified in our program of studies, but those. That coursework can only earn now elective credit only. We used to provide UA credit for those VHS classes. Till we're realizing that some students were fulfilling all of their UA courses without actually taking. The UA course at Lunenburg High School. So we wanted to make sure. That we were only providing elective credits for those courses. So I'm going to start off with our English department. They made some changes to the course descriptions. We are adding public speaking project to English one and English two at the CP and the honors level courses. Honors, I'm sorry, English three and four essentials. Is going to be renamed to World Literature Essentials. That's going to be offered next year. And American Literature Essentials, English will be offered in 2425 and those two courses will rotate every other year. We're gonna offer film literacy and creative writing. Those are now open to 10th, 11th and 12th grades. Formerly only juniors and seniors. We have some new courses in journalism, public speaking. And skepticism and conspiracy course. No real updates for our math department, except that we'll continue to provide. That Algebra Two Essentials course that we passed through last year and also that business math for juniors and seniors. Social Studies is offering a new course, American History Through Pop Culture. That would be offered to our juniors and seniors. Science, we have a few new courses. We'd like to offer insert a physical science essentials course to ninth graders coming in. In a biology essentials in grade 10, and then also a computer science encoding class for our juniors and seniors. World Language, we're replacing the use of the word foreign language with world language. And we are removing three world language electives that did not run. And those were multicultural connections, medical Spanish and Spanish for public service. Our phys ed courses is that we're offering two new BFS. Classes bigger, faster, stronger, a beginner course, and then it advanced bigger, faster, stronger. Course. We are going to offer music technology and that's going to be taught by our music department. In our visual arts department, we're going to be renaming art history to historical art practices. That's going to be available for all students nine through 12. We're removing animation too. And we have a new course sculpture, half credit for students nine through 12. We have also added into our program of studies, the intervention class. With the intervention teacher that began in August. So that is a credit bearing class. It's a half a credit. So those are the changes in course offerings that we have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If I'm unable to answer them, I'll, I'll provide the answers to you. When I can seek them out. Any questions?
Thank you. Does anybody member on the committee have a question? Mr. Beardmore?
Mr. Santry, can you explain? What, what the difference is between the, the, the course of study that you just explained now and the document that. Incoming freshmen get that basically explains what their. Obligations are in terms of graduation and, and how those two interrelate. For example, you've just talked about electives, non-electives, UAs, that kind of thing. And. It strikes me as I'm listening to you that. To a certain degree, and I know we're doing the right thing, but we're kind of moving the chess pieces on the board as, as the players are, you know. Are, are, are playing. So I'm, I'm curious as to how that, how that all relates.
So I think when we're offering those grade eight to nine courses that you're talking about that freshman will be signing up for. There's a limited amount of electives that they can be, that they can sign up for. So I think. That program of studies may be limited to the courses that they can sign up for. So that wouldn't be the, the total program of studies. Does that make sense, Mr. Beardmore?
What I'm really referring to is, is, are actually upperclassmen. So you have students that have come in. Let's say last year or the year before, and they've been given. You know, courses of studies from previous years that may not match this one. And so, you know, it's great. And a new, a new thing is offered and an old thing is taken away. It's still, I don't know, an elective credit or a social studies credit or that kind of thing. I guess what I'm getting to is, is does this create? Any kind of blocker or problem for? A student who may have strategized, well, I'll take. This course next year. Because I want to take it and it's offered through. I don't know, you know, the regular studies or a virtual classroom or something, and then all of a sudden it's not there. And, and does that? Ever create a problem for those kids?
I think that has created minor problems in the past because although. We may have a program of studies, that doesn't necessarily mean we would run that. Course if we didn't have the numbers to do so. So we might have a student who had planned on taking a class as a junior. Only three people signed up for the class. We don't run that class. So then we have to go back. That's where our guidance counselors do that coursework individually with each student to try to get them through.
Okay. One question. So I'm literally scanning through this document that we got tonight of. Of, of acronyms, educational acronyms that landed in our folder tonight. And the first one that I went to look for isn't on the list. So you use the acronym UA. In relation to virtual high school. So I'm wondering if you could explain what that means.
UA is, it, it stands for Unified Arts. That would talk about our performance arts, our, our visual arts, our art classes, any types of those pieces is a UA.
Okay. All right. And, and so can you explain again how that relates to virtual high school or no longer relates?
So sometimes students would take a virtual high school course. That didn't relate to an art or a music class, but we were providing them UA credit for that. So we, we are no longer doing that. We're just providing them with an elective credit, but they'll actually. Have to take a UA in our building with one of our teachers.
Okay. And, and one final question, and I'm, I, I brought this up at the. At the advisory committee meeting and I, I'm glad you're back, by the way. I know you were down for quite a few days. Or will we ever be able to provide a financial literacy class that's come up a few times in school committee meetings in years past and. It actually was brought up to me by a student last week and I'm. More or less relaying that, that request.
So we are, we offer those in different classes. We have a business mathematics class and. There's another mathematics course that deals with financial. Has units in it that deals with financial literacy. I, I can look into, look into it for you if we could. Have a specific half-credit course on financial literacy that would run up against like the business class. That we could run every other semester. So I guess my long-winded answer is yes, I don't think there's anything holding us back from. Providing that, I mean, and having six teachers. At the math level would help us provide that if we needed to.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
I think even along with the financial literacy too, even if you're, if you are incorporating it into that business course too, advertising that, that they can access that curriculum there too. I think that would be important as well.
Some kids may not know, right? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Santry. I, I think this is great. I think it's important to. Create more opportunities for the students and review the courses that we have to see if they're working and. And not be afraid to get rid of courses that aren't working and add courses that we think might be successful for the students. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other additional questions or comments?
I just want to say I love the public speaking. I feel like so. Shockingly, I had to take that class when I was younger. It was really beneficial, especially the, you know, kids. You're, you're getting up there in front of people and you want to give them the confidence and such a great tool to provide them that class. So.
That was the exact thinking that our department had, had that is that's an essential skill that we want students to have as they graduate.
Well, that's just it. I feel like, you know, kind of nowadays it's lacking a little bit. So this is great that we're supporting them so that they're able and confident enough to go out and. You get up in front of big crowds and express their opinions. So I love that.
Great.
Well, this is an action item. I'm looking for a motion on the LHS program of studies.
I'll make a motion to accept the LHS program of studies modifications.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Santry.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, moving on, the next item in the agenda, old business discussion on the FY 24 budget update.
I'll ask Mr. Cassidy to join us again.
Good evening, everyone. My Cassidy, Business Manager. Not a lot to update the committee on this evening regarding the FY 24 budget. There, there hasn't been a lot of action. Relative to numbers from town hall. We did meet with the, the town manager and. Karen Breschum. On January 11th. We, the superintendent and I presented the budget. Went through the new positions that are being proposed. Our concerns about the, the high insurance rate that is being proposed right now. And. Just, just a lot of questions regarding specific line items that. The town manager was inquiring about. So our conversation, conversation drifted, of course, to. Esser and those positions that will be expiring at the end of next year. And, you know. Just kind of talking through a strategy. On evaluating the positions that we're, we're going to be maintaining and fighting for. There wasn't, there, there was an, an update on chapter 70 funding. As the state is still calculating that. And waiting for the governor's budget. The five-year staffing plan did come up. And the one thing that we did emphasize with the, the town manager is. The positions that were in our presentation. On January 4th were consistent with the first year of that five-year staffing plan. And we got some deadlines on some of the reporting that she would need. For, for the five years as, so we'll be rolling that, that, that five-year plan that we presented on December 7th. Will be calculating the amounts for that for the town manager. I think that, that I didn't get a specific date, but it's, it's due at the end of January. We had a general discussion on our entitlement grants and. The likelihood of them being maintained and level, to, to level funding or increases. Discuss technology in, in the capital plan and strategy for. Our FY 23. Proposed projects. So it was a good meeting. It, it went a little bit beyond just the FY 24 budget. It's. We're, we're really hinging a lot of our. Changes to the budget, at least the administration is hinging, hinging a lot of any recommended changes to the school committee. Around that insurance rate and. Getting that. And it's really unsure, you know, we, we've received it at, in the middle of February. To the, the beginning of March. So I think we're still on target. For that, the May 15th, excuse me, the March 15th meeting. When we, the, the superintendent will propose her final recommended budget. So, so that's a, that's an update. That's the most part of our plan as the superintendent indicated earlier. In her report out, we are doing Zoom meetings. With the staff, one on Friday and. Two on Monday, Dr. Burnham. Okay, it was, okay, I wasn't really sure if we were going to do one or two. So we'll get some feedback from the staff. And we ordinarily meet with. The LEA representatives. So we'll likely have a discussion with the teachers' union tomorrow. About some of the goals of that budget. So that is. Once again, not a lot. Not a lot of, some action, just, just not a lot of. Recommended changes at this point, as it's still. About two weeks old and. I know we're going to be doing a, a Q and A. Over, or at the next school committee meeting. So I encourage any questions to be brought forth at that time. So I'll turn it back to the superintendent. If you, if I missed anything. Or if there's anything else you, you'd like to add.
I think you covered everything.
So I'll turn it back to the chair.
Mr. Beardmore?
So I think, just I, I do have a couple of very specific questions to Mr. Cassidy or, or Dr. Burnham. Do you know what the town manager's timeline is in terms of? Proposing, I, I saw her budget message a week or two ago at the select board meeting, but do you know when? She's going to do her five-year financial forecast and the. The budget proposal?
She did not share with us a specific date for those presentations.
Okay, I, I thought I had a finance committee meeting or something and seen a timeline, but I, I don't have the dates plugged into my head. Obviously that'll get to be a lot more pertinent in terms of what the. What the numbers are that she's thinking, given all of the various moving parts that she's dealing with. I will not be attending the next school committee meeting. Obviously, I'm very interested in the Q and A and, and perhaps. An offline conversation with you, Mr. Cassidy, that before or after. That meeting. I, I'd be very curious to hear if. There are any. Interesting opinions or, or ideas that come out of your meetings with either the. The staff and faculty or the LEA leadership and, and would ask if. If there is anything that. You think we should be aware of or, you know, may, may change things a little bit. If you could make us aware in writing, following those meetings, I would appreciate it.
We'd be happy to do that. We'll share that with the, the, the entire committee. Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Next item is a discussion on the school committee goals and progress.
So largely this was put on uh, the agenda for uh, the committee to check in on goals. Um, as Mr. Beardmore mentioned, I did uh, add. Uh, a rather lengthy list of acronyms. Uh, I, I will say that I um, just made that edit, add UA. While uh, Mr. Cassidy was talking and dropped that uh, updated version into the folder as well. I think it's, I think it's likely going to become a bit of a living document. And that when an acronym is used and it's recognized that it's not on the list, we can certainly update. Um, but I thought I'd provide this as a, a, a starting place for all of you. I know that um, Mr. School and Brini has said that he's taken lots of notes uh, about the different um, educational jargon uh, that he has to go uh, look up. So he may. Uh, have some thoughts about additional things that um, might be beneficial to add to the list. Um, you know, I can. Do whatever the committee would like to do with the list. We can post it as a draft on the website now. Uh, you can continue to review it. Um, over the next two weeks and we can uh, revisit the list again at the February first meeting and post it at that time. Um, as a final document. Um. Whatever you would like to do, but it does connect back to one of the school committee goals. So that's why you have it in your packet for this evening.
It may be good to wait till uh, the next meeting, so that way Tony and Carol can take a look at it and if they have any comments, they can provide them before the meeting.
Yeah, I would agree. I like the idea of even an action item too for a, a future agenda to, to have it published.
Yeah, I can see this as being a uh, kind of a document on our school committee page that we, you know, kind of go back to.
Yeah.
Half a year or something and we can, we can check Mr. Cool and Brady's notes and see if there's anything that's been added uh, since the last review. Um, but I think that that was a uh, I, I, it was good to see the document and I, I definitely need, I want to go through it. Um, just into personally, I just want to take the time to read it. I literally just scanned it as Mr. Santry was talking to see if, if that UA acronym was on there. Um, but I, I wanna, you know, my dad's an education professional. I want to put it in front of him just to see.
As a quiz?
Yeah, right, right, exactly.
I thought it was great. There's actually two APs. I didn't even think of that. I was like, oh, system principal AP and uh, advanced placement. That was, that was funny. Crazy. There's a lot.
Um, so with respect to the other, the other goals.
Yeah, I thought we could share it. If uh, Dr. Burnham, you could share it or you can give me access. I can share it. I think it'd be good for the public to see as well.
You have access, Mr. Layton?
Thanks. Gotta get off the acronyms. All right, Mr. Beardmore, if you wanna jump in. Can you see that all right?
Yep.
No. So the first goal was equity. It is the goal of the Lunenburg School Committee that all students, staff and family are welcomed and feel affirmed in. In our exclusive school environment. There's a typo there. Action steps, the school committee will review the outcome of the current equity audit. We discussed that tonight to collaborate with the superintendent to incorporate any audit recommendations. In resource allocation for future budget cycles. Benchmarks for audit report and funding of any recommendations. So I'll open it up to, why don't we just discuss, I guess, one at a time?
So we, we heard about, we, we heard a, a bit about the audit. Process in the, the last meeting and uh, during your report earlier, Dr. Burnham. Do we know when we're gonna have a actual report? Do we have a time and date specific on that?
I don't have a time and date specific. Um, they, they just asked us to read through a draft that still needs to go through formatting, um, et cetera. It's a rough draft. Just for accuracy, to be sure that um. We aren't doing something that they're recommending be done. Um, so we just have to go through it and, and just make sure that they didn't miss anything. Um, as soon as we can give them that feedback, they can work on the final edit with formatting, uh, et cetera. And um, I, I can and will uh, let the consultant know that I would really appreciate having the final draft. Uh, for our February first meeting. I don't know, Mr. Bearmore, how far in advance of that meeting I'll be able to get a copy. Um, obviously, if it's on the agenda for the uh, the February first meeting. No action need to be taken at that meeting. Um, at that time, we can just sort of present it. And then um, you know, add it on the February fifteenth. Um, agenda for some further discussion on recommendations.
Okay. So I think suffice to say we're on track. I think that the, the, the real operative question here is, and, and I don't know to what extent you've reviewed it or kind of thought through the process in terms of what might need funding. Um, but it's obviously very apropos to the previous discussion around the budget. So there's, there is a little bit of linkage there. I'm sure that, you know, whatever we. Come up with, we can probably get creative, but, but I'm, I'm sensitive to the linkage in terms of the timing around the budget and. The, the time and effort we've put into this already and making sure that we don't kick the can for a year on stuff that we could potentially do now.
Oh, absolutely right. I mean, we may not, depending on um, you know, that, that full list of recommendations, I think. Um, we're gonna have to take a phased approach. Um, where I don't think it would be prudent, nor do I think that, you know, um. I, I think that um, we have to be strategic in some of the changes that we may wish to make moving forward and be mindful of the fact that. Um. We're, we're potentially shifting mindset. It, as part of this work as well. Um, so I think um, we need to be thoughtful about um, mapping out uh, and phasing some of the, the action um, relative to recommendations.
Do you anticipate that? Let me think about how to formulate this question. The readout that in the draft that you have and the, the readout that you're thinking might be on the first. That will come with recommendations, but do those recommend, are those recommendations? So thoughtful that there's a strategy attached to those recommendations that might include? Potential a, approaches and phasing, or do you anticipate that that's gonna require another month or two of kind of working through?
I, I think um. I think it's largely gonna fall to us to um. Figure out the, the priority, the sequence um, and the uh, timeline. For actions. I don't, I don't, we're not gonna get that level of specificity with recommendations. Um, and uh, in my conversations with the consultant, you know, she's sort of indicated that recommendations are just that. They're recommendations. There are things that you can look to do as you continue your work as a district. Along this journey. Um. So I think that they're, they're just being, you know, comprehensive in their thinking around. What areas could the district continue to grow and, and what are we recommending that they look at for those um, areas?
Thank you. I, I think it's also part of, it's more on us too as a school committee to, to support this, this goal and support funding. If there are recommendations for funding, I think, yeah, I agree with Mr. Beardmore. It is gonna be challenging if the budget. Timeline doesn't line up, but I think we can find a way and make line item transfers if needed.
Mm-hmm.
Any, any other discussion on the equity goal? All right, seeing none. Uh, number two, increase communication with the community. It is the goal of the school committee to establish a fluid, consistent communication system with the public. The topics of our meeting should be readily available to all interested parties in the community. We need to hear the opinions of the public regarding school committee matters as well as communicate our actions and the timing and. Action steps, the school committee will use those modes of communication. Deemed most reliable by the survey results received in the spring of twenty twenty-two, email, Facebook, the school department website, town website. Video presentations provided by the school committee, by the school staff will be shared on the website and email to the parents. School committee meetings will have a hybrid or Zoom format to facilitate community participation. Be conscious and careful that discussions in meetings using technical educational language and acronyms are defined for listeners. Benchmarks, survey parents in the spring of twenty twenty-three regarding the communication of school committee activity. Gather a list of definitions to be posted on the school committee website. Monitor the number of views of video presentations. Now open this up to discussion.
Think also moving the public comment um, provided the opportunity for families to have um, their opinions heard. So that was helpful. Um, the Facebook thing for me is a little bit difficult because we can post what's gonna happen at the, at the meetings or, or our agenda. But we turn the comments off, which is the, the appropriate thing to do, but I have gotten feedback. Why do you have a page if we can't comment on it? Well, it's more to provide information and encourage if you would like to attend the meetings. I wish that could be, maybe I can put something on there that the purpose of the page.
Yeah, so that's something we could definitely work on because I've done that in the past, but it's, it's been years, but. At the very beginning, kind of in the timeline, there was a post like that. Maybe I repeated it once or twice, but.
Right.
There is some, a statement that we could kind of repeat every maybe couple months or something like that, just to reiterate that it is just for.
Right, because of course we want to hear feedback, but we don't want to hear it on a social media forum. We want to hear it um, at our meetings. So maybe I can just encourage that.
Yeah, and even adding that, right? Encourage them to come to meetings and also um, to reach out to the chair.
Yep, okay.
I like that.
I'll work on that this weekend.
We had discussed last week in relation to the, the, two weeks ago, in relation to the stipended position for social media that. We're gonna look at a, a social media policy. Uh, and I, I think that. You know, kind of getting some strategy and, and a plan together around. That role and, and more proactive management of the school department's Facebook presence, if that is in fact. The, the platform of choice, it sounds like it is. Um, I, I think we're, we're likely to make more progress once we have that. Policy in place and once we have a person managing this, following that policy. Um, and, and in my mind. As, as I stated last week, I think we kind of put the cart before the horse a little bit, but nevertheless, we still have to do both. And, and I, I don't feel like we've made, o- other than stating our intentions and, and. And, and approving a stipend, I don't, I don't feel like we've made progress there. Um. The video presentations, I, I don't think we've had a video presentation this year, so.
No.
I think those were good intentions and maybe exercised a little bit at the end of last year, but we haven't really done that.
I, I will say that we did, um. So there, there are video presentations that came from the uh, live Zoom meetings for each school. On the I Ready and the um, MCAS results, as well as the curriculum at the lower levels. Um. Those were, uh, the, the slides that were shared in those live meetings were voiced over, recorded. And posted um, and shared out with families. So those have gone out. Um, the SEL presentation was also a live presentation at a school committee meeting. Um, and we worked with PAC. And they did capture just the video portion of the meeting that was the presentation and the follow-up conversation. Uh, and questions that came from the committee. That video is posted on our website. Um, but other than that, I mean, there haven't been any other um, presentations that we've recorded. And sent to you in lieu of a presentation made to you.
Hmm. And that's okay. If it, if the situation doesn't warrant it, then so be it, right? I think. And I wasn't on the committee when that shit, when that change was made, but I think that it was, the reasoning was right. In terms of suggesting that we offload some prolonged presentations to the school committee into a recorded format. Um, and I would still entertain those and welcome, encourage those. I, I actually think what you just mentioned though, Dr. Burnham, is actually a really good thing. Um, the, the work that was done to kind of extract those conversations and package them. As an individual video from school committee meetings is a great idea. We have to promote those now, right? So the fact that they're on the website is great. We, you know, I, I'm not sure to what extent we're, we're promoting that the information is there, but um, but I do think that's a step in the right direction.
If it was a smaller file, uh, we would have just sent the link out by email, but the file itself was actually really. Um, large. We had to play around with trying to compress it. We weren't even sure that that was gonna um, work. We were. Uh, actually thinking that we may have to approach PAC and have them break it down into two. Uh, portions of, of the video, the presentation. And the, the follow-up discussion is separate so that um, they were more easily accessible, but. Uh, we were able to compress that file and, and post it on the website.
Yeah, so hosting on a website that is not really designed for that is hard to do. Um, we can, I, we could take it offline. We could look at. Framing and some YouTube versions of that and maybe working back of creating maybe even a sub-channel or. Our own school department YouTube channel or something along those lines, but there's gotta be a better way to do that than.
Okay.
Trying to engineer a video file for a website that isn't architected for it.
Yeah, I honestly, I just started thinking about the videos that we post on Facebook of our meetings, just I think seeing the, the number of views. That we get on, on Facebook from our meetings kind of tells you how popular those meetings were too. Uh, but I look at this goal too with just the community, community, communication with the community aspect too. I like what Laura had said about just like. Changing of the way we do public comment. A lot of these. A lot about this goal, we didn't even include in our benchmark that we are increasing our communication, but it wasn't through necessarily these benchmarks, but it was kind of. Outside of those benchmarks, but I think we did a lot of work with the, the communication aspect.
And the other thing that isn't captured here that is still for us. To kind of reap the benefits of is the work that the administration is doing as part of this family school partnership program, um, which. I have high hopes that there's gonna be great insights that could, you know, drive our practice here in the future. May, maybe, maybe not, but um. But you know, that, that was certainly a. My, my impetus to support going after participating in that program was to, to improve in particular on this topic.
Yes. Any other discussion on the school committee goals? We'll stop sharing. All right. Uh, any other discussion on the school committee goals progress? And then we will move on to reports. Does anybody have any reports we'd like to share?
I was not able to attend PAXL, but I do have some other meeting minutes. Um, they met on January tenth. Um. There was discussion on the DESI audit and the special education civil rights language. There's no flags came up and the materials were found culturally sensitive and unbiased. Trainings are gonna come for staff regarding civil rights and I believe more information is gonna be coming from Annika Scott. Um, although this presentation passed, um, what happened on Thursday, January fifth, the Federation for Children with Special Needs are held, held an online. Orientation and training for volunteers interested in being special education surrogate parents. So their parents who serve as appointed educational special decision makers for students in the custody of the State Department of Children and Families. Um, surrogate spend about thirty to forty uh, hours a year volunteering. And anyone with interest can contact the program at um, RTSC at FCSN.org or at six one seven three nine nine. Eight three four two. All this information is on the PAXL website. Um, Seven Hills, um, on John Fitch is providing family support and parents are encouraged to check out their website. At sevenhills.org um, slash what's happening calendar. There's a lot of different events going on. At seven hills.org slash what's happening calendar. There's a lot of different events going on. This year, if you have the mass PAC membership, your benefits include an invitation to a special series of family engagement panels with guest speakers. Sharing family engagement best practices, how families, schools and community groups can work together to improve student outcomes. If you have interest, you can reach out to Juliana so she can provide more information. There was a discussion on recommendation for sixth grade homework. I guess there were some reports that it was taking up to two, three hours per night and parents were struggling. With their child to get it all done. Juliana is going to send a survey out to all teachers regarding other options for students. Regarding homework. I think this conversation is going to continue at their next meeting in March, it's March fourteenth. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm surprised by that homework. Number that is, as the parent of an eighth grader and it was COVID, but we never. That, that represents. A considerable difference from our experience a couple of years previous. So I'm surprised by that.
It's excessive and we just need to figure out. Why?
Okay. I'm glad we're on it and we're going to look at it. The. The high school advisory committee met last Thursday. We discussed. Some high school environment issues, some of which I had brought up last week and I think the administration is continuing to work through. We discussed the budget, in particular, the humanities teacher position. And it was, so, so here's what I learned that perhaps came up in Dr. Burnham's presentation last week, but I needed to hear it twice. What is a humanities teacher? So the, the description is really taken from the situation that we're currently in. Which is we have two teachers that are teaching both. History and English. Curriculum courses. And in particular, we have a challenge right now that. Our classroom numbers are, are students per classroom in English classes are quite high. I've heard numbers of twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. I'm not precisely sure, but in that, in that neighborhood, which is a lot of kids to be sitting in one high school classroom for. Fifty minutes of whack every day. And so. So we need to hire to drive down that number. But also ideally. To put teachers in one track or the other. And so there's some work in determining what teacher does what and where this new hire will land. But ideally, we also want to have some flexibility. So a teacher who is certified on both tracks would be an ideal circumstance. So. We went through various amalgamations of what that looks like and. I was a, it was an interesting discussion. We discussed the intervention program. And, you know, the success that we're having there and. And some potential ways of, of potentially continuing and expanding on that program. So it was a very good meeting as they all are. And you learn a lot more about what's actually happening in those schools and sitting in those meetings.
Thank you. The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee met January 12th. I wasn't able to attend due to a family emergency. But they did post it on YouTube, so I was able to watch it. It was a short meeting. They only met for forty minutes due to other obligations by other members. But they did have the building commissioner, Casey there. To discuss some of the building code implications. One of the discussions was the TC Passios where. If it's over twenty thousand square feet, a lot of different rules come into play. And if the, if they only, if it's under twenty thousand feet. Square feet, then there's less rules that apply. So part of that discussion was with the hybrid, just renovating part of the building, keeping it under that twenty thousand, so it doesn't set off more codes. So they discussed that. There was still some concerns that they would still have to do some. Renovations that would be needed to the other parts of the building though, if that occurred. So there's still more to come on that. Also energy efficiencies that would potentially be needed. Phasing could also occur in some of the buildings too, so that could avoid some of the language like at the, the town hall, they could phase through that. And potentially wouldn't trigger changes. In the, by doing the, the. Swapping of offices and meeting rooms, it likely wouldn't change the change of use in the buildings. That was discussed as well. But still more to come, but we haven't set a date yet for when we're meeting next. All right. Next item in the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment from the public? Not seeing any. Any public comment from the committee? Not seeing any. Next item in the agenda is topics for future discussion.
I just. Want to check in on the, the two items that I keep asking about both facilities related. And, and. What we think we'll be able to do, not necessarily the specifics, but when we can have a discussion on it. The, the AC project at the primary school. And the. Get well, get healthy program or proposal on, on Turkey Hill Elementary.
So we're nailing down right now, just to give you an update. Some quotes relative to that AC project involving mini splits. We have some information, but it's not complete at this point. And I have a meeting scheduled to go over the capital plan specific to Turkey Hill. And trying to prioritize and start to work to get some. More accurate numbers on some of those projects. It's going to take a little bit of time because we're going to have to bring people in to get a look at it. But just, just know that there, there is some work going on. Behind the scenes, even though it hasn't come up yet on a, on a meeting agenda.
Do, do you have any idea or can you set any expectations in terms of when that might be?
I, I wish I could for you right now, but I, I can't. If I, if I can get a sense of that from Mr. Pusatari, I'll, I'll. Get back to you and let you know what we think that timeline might look like.
Okay. Would it come down to whether it's this budget season or next budget season? Is it that, that simple or no?
For the AC project, you mean?
Yeah.
Possibly. Let's, like I said, I, I'm going to need to get the actual numbers for what. The mechanicals are, what the electrical costs are and. Any roofing related costs. Because there, you know, would potentially be penetration through the roof. For some of the equipment, so we need to get the, the three different quotes on, on cost. So we're, we're still working on that.
So the.
We'll have real numbers. And there, there won't be a. A supply chain issue with the equipment, the, the actual mechanical equipment. Apparently according to vendors that is readily available.
So from a, a budget perspective on the, the AC issue. I mean, the good news is, is that with capital plan money. You know. It doesn't have a, it doesn't sunset really, right? We can, we can spend that money when we can. In my mind though. There's a certain responsibility or stewardship with this money where if we think that we can't do it or it isn't feasible. Given the various scenarios that we've talked about over the course of the last two years. I, I think we have an obligation to inform the town that we're not going to do it and send that money back as unexpended capital, which. I think would be very helpful right now, given. The financial situation that the town is in right now. So, so that's just my, my thinking around it, but I, I understand the fact that. We don't want to, we don't want to accelerate to the point that we're going to. You know, do a disservice to, to our students and faculty at the, at the primary school. On the. On the, the Turkey Hill program. I, I feel like we just need to keep it, we just need to move the ball. If, if the building design committee were on the path that it articulated. Six or eight months ago, I would feel much more. Hurried on this because I thought that. We would be anticipating, you know, an article at town meeting for the municipal design committee in May. Given the path of thereon, I think that that's unlikely. But I, I did feel as if it was very important to be able to articulate this Turkey Hill program. In parallel to the municipal design committee. Report and proposal, so. I, I don't think that it's as urgent as it may have been if they were on a, an accelerated path, but I. I still don't want to lose sight of this. I, I still think we need to make sure that we're able to articulate what it's going to take to do this. To do this in a way that, you know, serves the students well over, over the next decade.
And we can add to the topics for future discussion. Is there any other topics for future discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn at seven fifty one PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty one.
Back in.
All right. I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore.
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.